It is 7:00 on Wednesday, March 26. We'll welcome you to the Tulsi Planning Commission meeting for this evening. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please rise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is our roll call. Commissioner Hammer.
Here.
Commissioner Proctor.
Here.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
I'm Commissioner Robinson. I also am here. We recognize our alternate commissioners Dunn and Gossett, as well as Mr. Page, Mr. Agard, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Baker, Ms. Fairborn, Mr. Lawrence, and council members Manzioan and Hanson, all with us this evening. Next on the agenda, a public hearing and recommendation on a zoning map amendment request by D.R. Horton to amend the standards of the Western Acres PUD for approximately 86 acres located approximately 2,000 North Copper Canyon Drive in the MR-16 PUD zoning district. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the zoning map that indicates the boundary of the Western Acres PUD. It's an 86 acre surrounded by MR-16 with some general commercial located to the west. You're pretty familiar with the property and its location. This is the aerial photograph. The development itself, I would say, is approximately 50% complete. And so this PUD amendment would not affect the entire development, but only a small portion of the development. And allow me to explain what's going on here. When this project originally came to the city for approval, it was first looked at as a PUD. And D.R. Horton, at great expense, installed a trail system and realigned the Middle Canyon drainage, basically extending from the southeast corner to the northwest corner of the development. They put a trail in there and it's become a community amenity. And hopefully, we'll be able to connect to that and have a significant trail system through the city. In response to that, the city approved the PUD, which came with specific conditions, or should I say standards, that were above and beyond what the current or the standard zoning ordinance permits. When we did that PUD approval, what was presented, as shown on the screen, had not gone through any kind of staff, a formal staff review in regards to building setbacks or development standards or things of that nature. So it was anticipated that as each plat or each phase develops, that we might come across situations that need to be addressed. The notice, because this is an amendment to the PUD, it technically impacts the entire 86 acres. However, it really only affects about 4.5 acres within the development. And I've done my best to highlight the areas that would most likely be affected by this PUD amendment. It really involves the townhouses that are adjacent to the Middle Canyon drainage. And the issue that we're encountering with that is, at some point in the future, D.R. Horton would either like to put this drainage into its own parcel, or maybe even dedicate or give this drainage to Tulsi City for perpetual maintenance of the trail system and so forth. Either way, when that happens, this will become a property. Now, right now, the townhouse is, as you can see, are approximately eight to 10 feet away from the edge of that drainage. Right now, that's fine, because that's not a property line. That is an easement line. So there is no property line there. However, in the future, if this were to ever become its own parcel, and that becomes a property line, we then have a setback problem, because those setbacks wouldn't comply with what is currently required by the code. So we would like to basically catch this problem and fix it before it becomes a problem. And D.R. Horton is requesting that we amend the conditions, especially for the land in the MR-16 underlying zoning district, to have two new standards in there for building setbacks. Now, I had originally sent you a staff report with the packet that just basically stated that townhomes can be set back eight feet from property lines, and then one foot for the rear yard, and then one foot for the side yard, as long as they're not next to public streets. Roger looked at the staff report and he suggested that we worded differently. And so I redid those and sent the staff reports to you again. So hopefully, you all received those. Didn't really change what was being asked for, but it just kind of worded it in a more clear, concise manner. But the purpose for this is to try and avoid any problems if that drainage were to become its own parcel in the future. Basically, what we're requesting, and this slide's not accurate, but we're requesting, or D.R. Horton is requesting, that rear yard setbacks for townhomes should be eight feet, and side yard setbacks should be one feet from property line. If the setback is adjacent to, or the building is adjacent to, a public street or a private road, the setback would be in a range of 10 to 20 feet. Now, this is in there because the design standards of the multifamily, or Tulsi City Code 7-11A, require a range of 10 to 20 feet for any townhouse that's adjacent to a public or private street. So we want to make sure we have that in there, so we don't create any conflicts for townhouses that are adjacent to public streets. So that's what's being requested. This PUD amendment does not alter in any way the configuration of Western Acres. It does not increase or decrease unit counts, and it does not change unit styles. It's just a housekeeping issue that we need to resolve that wasn't discovered when we first did this approval. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Mr. David Lewis is here from D.R. Horton as well.
Thank you, Mr. Agard. Any questions for staff by members of the commission?
I have a question.
Commissioner Jensen.
Does the city want to take on this drainage ditch for maintenance?
I think they do. I think it'd be, it'd be, it'd be in our interest to take it for maintenance and to connect the trail systems that extend almost all the way to Middle Canyon at this point. Ultimately, that comes down to a decision of the city council. But that'd be my position on that.
Mr. Hanson, do you want to speak to that quickly?
I agree 100% with what Mr. Agard has said. There's another factor to consider. We have had other developments that abut the Middle Canyon drainage in the past, that the developers have said, "We will retain ownership on." And then later, they've gone to the county and created a parcel, stopped paying property tax, it's gone up for tax sale, and unwitting people have bought what they think is several acres of land, only to find that it's this flood channel that has no value. And we've had instances in the past where the city has bought the land back to protect it and preserve it. D.R. Horton has really set a standard for the city in improving and stabilizing that channel. If you've been up there and looked at it, it's not a small, inexpensive task they've done, and they've constructed the trail. My engineering opinion is, I think it would be in the city's interest to control it, to manage it, to have access to it, and to, because we have liability for it anyway with the floodwaters. So that's my opinion. Again, they don't have application today to give it to us. And I think Andrew's exactly right, that it would be the city council's final decision to accept it, should that application come. But I support the motion tonight. I don't think it's detrimental.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Did that answer your question?
It did. And that was, you went into it perfectly, because that was part of my question, is, was this just a way to drop it onto the city later? But if the city wants it, or thinks it'd be better for the city...
I don't know that we want anything. But I, but I think this could be a good benefit for the city. I don't, I don't see a detriment to it. No, others may have different opinions, but I don't think it's worth, I think it's worth considering at least. Thank you.
I had another question, maybe for the applicant, but just why, why a separate parcel? That's just so they could give it to the city or sell it to somebody? I don't understand why they would necessarily want to change it.
Say that again.
Make a new parcel. Why do they want to make a new parcel out of it?
They would have to in order to change ownership. Otherwise, otherwise, you'd have to divide it to sell it.
Yeah, I understand that. So they don't want it. That's why they're trying to make a parcel. Is that correct?
Can we, can we wait until after the public hearing? Is that all right?
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's all my questions.
Okay. So now you know what's coming, Mr. Lewis.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for staff? Okay. If not, well, this item does require a public hearing. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone here that wants to come forward and address this item, now is the time.
I have a question.
Come on up, and you can sign your life away on that form and ask your question.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Carpio, and I currently reside in the existing development where this is now coming up. It's, it'll be my backyard. And I guess, most importantly, is how is it going to affect my pocket if the city does take this on? Is that going to be a cost? Is there going to be anything that will kind of pass over in terms of costs of running this particular drain or the water management? Does that affect us in any way?
You can talk to the city council members after this meeting and ask for sure, but no.
Okay. Also, who would we take up with throwing water every time they're digging?
Well, you can talk to the city council members again, or you could probably complain to Mr. Lewis as well.
I've already been in touch with D.R. Horton, and also with Alex, which is the property manager, the development manager, or the super, yes. And he assured me that we would be dropping water every single time. There'd be hulls of dirt. And that happened the first year, which was two years ago. Last year, it happened twice. And I'm just concerned about it, because I have children that use our backyard, and we have a pool that we like to be able to use, and my son has asthma. And it makes it really hard to be out there with that dust constantly. I can't even open my doors, because the dust, that's, and we all know, we live in Tulsa, there's a lot of wind, and everything that goes on those big trucks gets blown. And he promised me that there was supposed to be, and the city also told me that, by law, there was supposed to be water being dropped behind those trucks. And I have cameras in the back of my house, so I have recorded footage of it not happening. But I just want to know who would be accountable for that.
That's definitely not within our purview this evening, so that's something you'd discuss with city staff or city council for sure.
Okay. And I suppose if it's not going to affect the homes that are being... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Lewis, I'll invite you up to answer Commissioner Jensen's question, if you don't mind.
So David Lewis IV with D.R. Horton.
I will sign my life away here as well.
Require a blood sample, too.
Commissioner Jensen, would you mind restating?
What's the purpose of wanting to make it a separate parcel?
It's solely for ownership purposes, for the city to take it over. So there's already an easement for the cities on the recorded plat to come in and maintain and take care of it. But like Mr. Hanson said, it's, it's the intent, and has been, you know, in the discussions ever since the beginning, to have that ownership change.
To the city?
Uh huh.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring this item back to the commission for any further discussion, or questions, or comments, or maybe even a motion.
I'll take the motion.
Commissioner Proctor.
I move forward a positive recommendation to the city council for Western Acres PUD zoning map amendment request by David Lewis IV, representing D.R. Horton, to amend the standards of the Western Acres PUD regarding townhome setbacks, application number 2025 of 028, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 2025.
There's a motion for a positive recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Jensen. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
It should be the March report dated March 26th. The staff report dated March 26th, not 28th.
This is March 26th.
The new one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, saying that, Commissioner Proctor?
Yeah, March 26th.
Okay. Good seconding that, Wes?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none will take it to a vote. Commissioner Hammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. That moves forward to the city council with a positive recommendation, seven to zero. Next on the agenda, public hearing and recommendation on some proposed amendments to the Tulsi City Code 7-19 regarding non-standard divisions of land in the city. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. This code amendment has come from one of your ranks. He can raise his hand if he'd like to. But he was the one that proposed this, and it's a, it's a, it's a good proposal, and it's one that we wanted to present to you and get your take on it. We're proposing some amendments to two of Tulsi City's codes, 7-1-5 definitions, and 7-19 subdivisions, and it's regarding the creation of non-standard divisions of land in Tulsi City. Currently, in order to subdivide in Tulsi City, it can be quite expensive. You have to hire a surveyor or civil engineer to design a plat and to design utility drawings. That can run anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000. You have to construct all the frontage improvements and all utilities necessary for a new home on the lot. That can cost thousands of dollars as well. And then you also have to purchase from the city or dedicate water sufficient to satisfy the needs of the proposed development, which can also run you tens of thousands of dollars. So if you're somebody who just has some excess property that you don't want to keep anymore, you don't want to pay taxes on it, you don't want to do anything with it, you just want to get rid of it, there's nothing in the city's code that permits you to do that without going through these improvement requirements. And the reason we have this in there is to protect the city, to make sure that the improvements are done, to make sure that new development occurs in an orderly manner, and that when a lot is subdivided and the city signs the plat, that we're guaranteeing that that is a buildable lot and has everything that you need to build a house on it. So that's why it's there, and it's there for a good reason. However, the issue we've been encountering is Utah State Code 10-9A-103 already permits a division of land by deed or by other instrument. If the deed states in writing that the division is in anticipation of future land use approvals, does not confer any land use approvals, and has not been approved by the land use authority. So state law already allows people to do a non-standard division of land. And it happens quite regularly. There's a lot of times I'll hop onto the county's parcel map, and lo and behold, there's a new subdivision. Well, that's how they're doing it, okay? They take it to the county, and the county records it. County does not have to tell us about it, and they don't. The problem that we encounter is, the people that do that assume that they have a subdivided lot. And they still have to go through the process of subdividing a lot to install those improvements when they're ready to develop that parcel. So what we would like to do is add this information to our code, but also add more information that also basically gives staff the backing to require a subdivision when a non-standard division of land has created a parcel. The first amendment in 7-1-5 is in the definition section. It's for the definition of a subdivision. We're proposing the additional language of a subdivision does not include a non-standard division of land under Section 7-19-6.2. So if you go do a non-standard division of land and you record it with the county by deed, that is not a subdivision, and it does not qualify for any kind of development approvals. The other code amendment that we're proposing is 7-19-6.2, non-standard divisions of land. Now, it basically reflects state code. You can do a non-standard division of land when there is no association with a land use application. You can do a non-standard when it does not confer any land use approvals, and it has not been approved by the land use authority. Now, Section number three is the part that I particularly appreciate. It states, "Before a parcel of land involved in a non-standard division can receive land use approval, the owner must comply with all requirements of this code for land use approvals, including but not limited to all land use regulations, subdivision, public improvements, bonding and construction, conveyance of water rights, payment of impact fees, et cetera." The reason I like this part of our, of the code amendment is, I'll give you an example. Holiday Oil is proposing a new convenience store out on the intersection of 600 West and 1,000 North. They did a non-standard division of land. They, they went to the county and recorded a new parcel, breaking that off from the, from the larger parcel surrounding it. They submitted a site plan, and they assumed that their subdivision was ready to go. I was in a situation where I had to basically tell them, "You still need to do a subdivision, and you're not going to get site plan approval until you do." And that was necessary, because we have right-of-way that needed to be dedicated, there's some improvements that need to be done, water rights need to be addressed. And they have submitted their subdivision applications. But I didn't have anything in the code to back that up. So this, this gives me some, some muscle to basically tell people, "Okay, you, you can, you can split that off, non-standard, but you still got to go through the subdivision process when you're ready to develop." And so, as far as benefits go, I think this is a good benefit for Tulsi City residents to split off and cut loose some excess property that they don't want to develop or do anything with. And they can do so without cost. It also brings our ordinance into greater compliance with state law, and it codifies the city, in the city code, that non-standard divisions of land are not subdivisions, and that if development is desired, they have to go through the subdivision process. And then I just wanted to throw out some possible detriments for your information. It could result in the creation of non-conforming parcels throughout the city. This could be a problem when they want to develop on those parcels, because a subdivision cannot be approved if it does not conform to the zoning. So if it's too small or too narrow, and it doesn't meet the zoning, they're not going to be able to get that subdivision approved. But that is, that's a risk they'd have to take. Creates lots that are not ready for development. It pushes the costs of the design, design of the subdivision, and the development improvements and water rights onto whomever purchases the lot. And there's no guarantee that the seller is going to tell them that. And then it ends up being staff that ends up being the bearer of this bad news. And I don't particularly mind that. I've got thick skin, but that can be, sometimes can be an issue. So that's what we're requesting in regards to this text amendment. It makes sense, and like I said, the state law already allows it. So we might as well have our ordinance comply with that, and then have a little, little more strength to make sure we get our subdivisions done. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions from the commission for staff on this item? Seeing none, it does require a public hearing before we make a recommendation. If there's anyone here that would like to come forward and address this agenda item specifically, now's the time to do so.
So I have a question. You said, you said there's already state law for this, right?
Could you, I'm sorry, but being a public meeting, would you mind just speaking into the rostrum and putting your name in there?
You said there's already state law for this that references the division, that you referenced. So why don't we just reference state law? So when state law evolves, we're not constantly having to change it, so that we're in compliance with state law? So as state law makes the appropriate changes, we adjust with it, instead of having to come back to this every time the state modifies their rules. If we're going to follow their rules, why don't we just say, "See state law?" And the other thing was, why don't you make it a requirement for them to subdivide, have the, the matching, whatever they're breaking off, have to be in compliance with what they're breaking it off of? So if it's an R-16 or something, it's got to meet those guidelines in order to be broken off. Because you're going to start getting all these little oddball lots around here that you can't build on, they're just going to be vacant properties throughout the city. So if you've got a half acre and you want to divide it into two quarter acres, then you got to make sure they're both compliant to be built on in the future, instead of leaving an oddball. So like, why don't you put that on the person breaking it off, the person subdividing, it should be their responsibility to leave behind a lot that's buildable. Instead of, like he said, bad news, "Oh, by the way, you can't build a house that's 200 square feet, too small." They should make it, when it's getting recorded, they should make that a requirement of those people breaking it off, that it is a compliant lot to be used in the future. I'm sure you guys don't want a bunch of lots sitting around and taking up your neighborhood that are non-buildable, ever, that are just eyesores.
Okay. Could I, your name again, sorry. Could you say your name for the record?
Richard.
Richard, last name?
Stripling.
Richard Stripling. And then write it there. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Stripling. Mr. Baker, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, we actually agree. We would prefer that the non-standard subdivision not be allowed by state law, because, as it is now, we have no ability to require that these divisions result in legal developable But that's the state law, and that's what we've been given and told. As to why we don't just reference the state law, it's because the state law is contained in an obscure location as to what a subdivision is not. And it's an awkward way to allow something is to define it as what it isn't. And if that sounds vague and circular, it's because it is vague and circular. In addition, the state law does not give us any of the protections that we are asking you and the council to give us in terms of number three, which would create legal developable lots and have the developer pay the costs of development. So, good questions. We agree with those concerns, and we're trying to put in place the best tool we can, instead of the blunt, obscure tool that the state has given us.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else want to come forward and address this agenda item? If not, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for questions or comments or discussion.
Got a quick question. So this pretty much ties our hands as a city. In order for this to change what we want, we're going to have to go to the state level to do it, right? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, we'd have to go to the state for what?
To define this a little bit more, to put, to make it how we want it, so they can't just sell this piece of property that's undeveloped.
Right. I don't think we would need to go to the state legislature to ask them to change state law. They've given us enough of a foothold that we can grab that and make it better.
Even in the city's hands?
Make it work for us, yeah.
Okay. Let me make more sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. Anything else from the commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion on this recommendation.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
I did.
I'm moving forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the non-standard division of land, text amendment request by Tulsi City, for the purpose of amending the Tulsi City Code to enable non-standard divisions of land, and to codify the requirement that parcels created by such means shall remain, shall be required to obtain necessary division approvals at a time of development, based on the findings listed in the staff report.
There's a motion for a positive recommendation from Commissioner Hammer. Is there a second? Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none will take that to a vote. Commissioner Hammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
The chair also votes aye. That moves forward to the city council with a positive recommendation, seven to zero. Next, our city council reports. Council member Manzioan, welcome, and it's all you.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. At our last meeting in our biz, first of all, I want to tell you thanks to the planning commissioners who were at our meeting. There were several planning commissioners at our meeting, so this will be no news, new news to you. In our business meeting, we did learn a lot about the differences in asphalt preservation between slurry seal, chip seal, there were some others, too, et cetera. And we approved some payments for preserving some of those roads in Tulsi City, and our public works director has a really great plan for that. He's working through the city to get our roads taken care of and up to... He's working through the city to get our roads taken care of and up to where they need to be, and that is really important for our transportation plan in Tuila City, and as, as you know, as you all commute through the, the city. So appreciative of his efforts in getting that plan together and having a good plan for that going forward. In our work meeting, we had a couple of discussions. One was on this same discussion you just had about the non-standard deviations, divisions of land. We had pretty much the same conversation, so we'll look forward to having that again. We also discussed nuisance abatement ordinance, changing that in regards to six-inch weeds. Had some discussion on that. We did table that discussion for some further clarification, so that will come back at probably the next meeting, so. And then we also had a discussion on the topic that was referred to us from the planning commission about the location and placement of accessory structures in commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. So we had a great discussion about that. Again, very similar to the discussion we had here at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so we're going to work on some guidelines for that, and I'm sure that will come back to you in the near future. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Does look like it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, review and decisions for the minutes of the meeting held on March 12th, 2025. Any discussion on the minutes? Fixes that need to be made? If not, someone would like, want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from March 12th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Hamilton, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. We'll take that to a vote. Commissioner Hammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. Those minutes are approved, seven to zero. There's an item for discussion that we... Okay. Mr. Agard.
Yes, sir. We need to establish a pre-development attendance schedule. As you know, we have pre-development as needed every Wednesday at 3:30, and we'd like to have a planning commissioner there. So if you are willing to attend that meeting, we've got a few months ahead that we need to, we need to get assigned so that when a packet is ready to go out, we can send that to you. So who would like to attend these meetings in April?
Historically, that's what we've done, is we've broken them up by month for those of you who may not remember.
Yeah, I'll do April.
Okay. May?
I'll do May.
June?
I'll do June.
July?
I can do July.
I can do July, too. I'll do July.
August?
I can do August.
September?
You can give that to me.
Okay. October?
My turn.
I'll take that one.
Means I get Christmas.
And December. Okay, these meetings don't happen every week. They are, as I mentioned, as needed. Sometimes we have feast or famine with these things. We've been in a bit of a famine period in regards to these meetings, but we just had one today. Commissioner Sloan attended that one. So whenever we get them, whoever's on that list, Alyssa Thompson will send you the packet information and the invite, and we, we appreciate having one of you there to, to give us some perspective from the planning commission. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agard. Commissioner Sloan.
Mr. Agard, while you're there, it's probably appropriate there. We all remember the conversation we had, Commissioner, Councilman, Councilwoman, Manzio just mentioned the, the portal structures and parking lots. If you'll think back, a couple of meetings ago, we had that discussion about an existing one in front of Cal Ranch, and our intention, as I recollect it, was requiring reflective material on all four corners of that existing structure from the ground going up 48 inches. Having visited that site since then, there's now small reflectors at the 48-inch mark, but, and, and property owner was here, and misunderstandings are always important. I should have caught it on the last minutes, did not, but just wanted to make sure before we adjourn, I know that, that staff was looking at, at writing the applicant a letter and just letting him know that there's a translation issue there, making sure that I didn't state the motion originally improperly, that anybody have a different understanding of what we agreed to. Before, before he goes off and writes a letter.
No, that's exactly what I understood.
That's what I remember as well.
From the ground 48 inches up.
Kind of a strip type of reflection. Just, you can see that building. That's my vision, most of you.
Yeah, that was my recollection as well.
Okay. That's all I answered. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sloan, for clearing that up. Any other items of discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.